Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the board of the committee, the whole meeting, September 13th, 2021, at seven PM. Ben, you're full.
Member of all?
President.
Number seven?
President.
Member Fonda, here. Member Peters?
Here.
Member Ryder?
Here.
Member Troy?
Here.
Member Foltz is absent, six present.
Would you excuse Member Foltz?
Uh huh. Second.
For favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries. Okay, first up, we have Screen Alley, Chairman Hart.
Okay, so what we're talking about today is the Roundabout. It's a joint venture of school system. And it's, uh, we're gonna apply together for OOPWC, which is Ohio Public Works. And it's about 1.5 million dollar grant. And the goal is really, we have about 200 linear foot. So it's gonna be really all the way out, we're gonna redo Portage or Charlotte, whatever you wanna call it. And there's a section where we own some land and we have a school to work with us. So we make the Roundabout big enough to accommodate cars, semis, whatever. Because that's some of the comments that I heard was, you know, is it gonna be okay to take a semi? And since there'll be a little bit more activity there because the school drop off and pickups and so forth, but hopefully some activity in the Hoover District. This would be the appropriate size to give us the best access. It'll be like, um, Rob, I'm sure you can speak on it in more analytical terms, but the gist of it is, that's what we wanna do when we do the agenda tonight. If there's no questions, or Rob, you can chat in, and it will be an emergency as well.
Yeah, I think you covered it fairly well. Uh, yeah, we're looking at some improvements to the whole Charlotte corridor. The company, the PK, the secondary elementary school, the North Canton School is doing. And also the far eastern Charlotte, our, you know, 135,000 square feet motivation. The 400 consultant employees in 26 semi-truck days. There's, you know, Charlotte, as you know, is almost too many. We had a track of impacts coming down, and we had more than that, but effectively we did track through there. The western intersection, the fiber intersection, the four, that we are proposing around. That's something years ago, Member Foltz had a public meeting for good war from 2015, 2016. We presented our action, it was not an assault at that time. I think we had three different outcomes, and that was the chosen one by the neighbors. So we had a little survey. And now it's sort of trying to go through it, probably have a growth in the area. So what we're looking to do is try applying for how Public Works commission grant money. Like we had to at the end of the week. And we're looking to get about, not quite fifty percent of our estimated construction and actual cost. And the most of that is worth 1.5 million. And with the school as our formal partner by agreement, we have stronger collaboration, stronger application.
So, so real quick, I was asking Ben about the map, just because the visual's always important, ain't it? And so, you know, I don't know if you can just show that one time for the audience, people online, and all the council members.
We will start right there, the, basically the four little Charlotte, Willem, five little intersection. And it's sort of just slightly west of that, that intersection would be around about right there where the cursor is, where it says Parkout lot 1, lot 5. The city purchased that park some number of years ago. So we'd like to shift around about as far to the north as we can get, but still have those, have it function properly for the ingress, egress to the Roundabout. Got questions to, obviously, semi-truck and school bus design is a huge factor. We can all point at a few hundred bucks in the area, as they are becoming popular, though they're just simply too small, too tight. So we have computer software, one's auto term, where you can program truck, largest fire truck, school bus, put those right in the pile, and make sure that it can traverse the Roundabout. That's what we wanna do, is have that, and have hundreds of trucks available, and have evil, and can negotiate with them. So we're at a preliminary stage right now, knowing that, that, you know, it's a pretty accelerated schedule. Does it need to be up and functioning a quarter or a half of evil in schools in August to come in?
Rob, I got a couple of questions from constituents here. Since this has been on the agenda here, I gotta pick a phone call. And I'm all for aesthetics, I love the look of stuff like that. That's great. But is it functional? Is it going to be functional? That's what they're all asking.
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause if you see the one up at the airport, it is non-functional.
That's...
Okay? And that's the worst thing you could possibly do.
Yeah.
Last thing we want is a name like malfunction junction coming into North Canton. That's the last thing. So other question that, and I thought these are good questions. You know, you've got Hillcrest, the light there, what happens when that backs up in the morning with all the kids? Does the whole, the, the light goes away?
The light goes away.
Okay, that answers that question.
Yeah.
That's good, that's a good question, I thought, and I'm, and I'm...
Very good question.
And let's see, what is it saying here? Couple of other questions. Just, somebody asked me about the other roads that are coming to it, aren't really busy roads.
Right.
There are very little traffic on those roads, so why are we creating something? We only have two busy roads that would go straight. I guess we had a third, Portage doesn't get a whole lot. But that was the other question.
Well, Portage will, because of the increased traffic that we can have from evil, all the employees, 27 school buses, and then there are like the 400 some odd parks for the parent pickup, and AM, PTA. And that's a bit stagnant from the evil shift, we've talked to them about their shift. In a traffic study, you mentioned that we've picked on as well. We need all the capacity we can get in a quarter or a half. And right now, Portage westbound is, is one, you can't even go.
Yeah.
We have this road right there, pretty long, it's where Hudson Rainey is, it's right back. This way we can re-open Portage to two-way traffic. And, and, you know, we got a road that's huge. So that, that will help with that. Willem is, if you write, it's going like 17 feet wide to the south. But it'll come up and kind of tend a little bit to the east northeast. And then if you wanna go west from Willem, you can just go around the bulk of Roundabout, 270 degrees. From Willem coming from the north, basically, the only forces are still right. So if someone wants to go into town east, does it take Hillcrest or Roundabout?
My thing would be a really cool looking entry, I don't think there's any questions I'd ask.
Yeah.
I hope we have some, some plans to continue down Portage, so it doesn't, you know, all of a sudden go...
Yeah.
That's our next big project.
Back for that public meeting, if it's part of our grant application, we could render it back in 2015. But it really just shows, yeah, cool, good look, so.
Good, thank you for answering my question.
Any other questions?
Comment and a question?
Light.
In the light ladder. Comment?
Your red light on, I'm sorry.
Great, bye, move to the progress. The person, here.
I've seen Roundabouts in other communities. To the point, Rob, if they're designed properly, they are highly functional to do the traffic from the intersection.
Absolutely.
During the initial period, they are body handles to light. So all the other body shots may have to, it's worth to do that. So if it fits, it'll work great. But I think the other thing, when we talk about, maybe you can clarify this for me. I'm not sure the issue of traffic inbound and warding, that would be from west to east, is as critical as the outbound traffic in the afternoon. Because as you look at the frontage on Charlotte, my sense is that if you had traffic lights, which we do now, you don't have the ability to really stack up much traffic on that street. Goal circles move traffic down that street and out of town.
Exactly. Correct.
Exactly, that's a full Roundabout. Yeah, and, and even if there is a collision, it's just very low speed, side swipe, and so folks get used to them. And one thing to point out, next year, it's coming in two years, and we begin construction of two of them, is Pittsburgh corridor. With Pittsburgh in Shuful, on Pittsburgh growing, and we wouldn't be up and on until the following year. So there'll be even more in our area right now, for folks to become accustomed to.
Yeah, but you can't really get used to it, it's not getting used to doing it, once you get in the community, it becomes a sensation.
Right.
But, but again, as I, when I look at, you know, the school viewpoint, it's that you really don't have a huge amount of front footage, you have cars stopping at traffic light, backing up all the way up to Main Street. That's what you're trying to avoid.
Rob, just an add-on, Rob's adding for, you're gonna take that light out of Hillcrest?
Yes.
What's that intersection in the yard? And there's some traffic comes down Hillcrest.
Right. We looked at that in, in, in the traffic study that we had done. We took the current traffic that we have, and then our projected traffic based on evil and schools and normal growth. And right now, signal's not even warranted though. We've kinda kept it up since I came, because you can make the argument for site distance to see around a couple of big pine trees and stuff that are there. So the signal's not warranted, and when the bills in there, we're putting it on about, it's still not.
So if you ever stop, a circle does not stop the flow of traffic.
Exactly. And so if someone who wants to turn there, they're gonna have to wait. They're gonna have to wait, they may go a different route, but, but, I mean, it's just the neighborhood that's in line. Let me think of others.
If there's a couple more questions, I know this is the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Both?
We need a second, perfect.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Thank you, Rob. Okay, moving on, five minutes, and then property, sure, I'm aware.
Okay, we have two different allocations. We have 20,000 plus, the police department, we had sold some equipment. And then we had different allocations through sewer administration, and then we were gonna do sewer maintenance. Pretty much just a wash. So it came up to a total of $52,275. Anything else? Okay. Nothing else, I'm gonna to adopt, or, we'll put it to the agenda, sorry.
Second.
Okay, we say aye. Both? To the agenda as well. Okay, next up, ordinance rules. Chairman Johnson, sorry.
Okay, this is just the reconciliation of our ordinance with the state law. It's really not easily explained. There, there's nothing, nothing aside from that. Last year, I think there were only two changes, this year, there's twelve. So, Ben, do you care if we leave?
Yeah, this is, we do this every year, there's a number of pieces of our code that we borrow from the hardback code. And so we update them to match on an annual basis. And this is everything that changed from past year.
Sounds good.
Any questions, comments? I move that we put this on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries. All right, next up, personnel safety, got a couple items here. First off, to increase the position cap for emergency medical technician, paramedic, firefighter. And this has been responsible, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, moving from a volunteer slash part-time more to a professional, full-time group?
Yeah, this is a different boundary than we have today. Is that the business model has changed on us, part-time volunteers, they just aren't part-time volunteers. They have real jobs, doing real things, and that, you know, hard affect, they, they're removed on it. And, uh, we do have, we need, if you look at the study on call volume, and we average about 280 calls a month, EMS calls, and, uh, to staff round the clock. There's just, there's just not enough personnel, full-time, so we end up wanting more of a part-time, they're paid. But, uh, that presents its own challenges, because it racks up a lot of overtime. Some of these part-time paid people are working 800 dollars a week.
So how many positions for this cap act?
Uh, that is not the call.
Um, this would be an increase of three from the current cap, but I don't, from my conversation with Chief, we didn't plan to ask for any new positions in this budget for the coming year. It's more being ready for, this is how it is.
Daryl?
Can we finish with this, and then I'll just close with a comment?
Hey, this is Patrick, we're...
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have any further comments, anyone else have a comment?
I agree, I agree.
How about we, you know, I think, uh, change as far as hiring. Pat has moved it to a car, safety forces, fire, EMS, ball, I sense, move it in.
Yeah, Chief, they confirmed that it includes an increased free capacity, but we are not budgeting next year to hire anybody new to the street.
Any comments?
Let's go back to a question that perhaps some future council might wanna contemplate. And that is, you know, what, just lay this out, what's your role for fire EMS? Do you want it? There are other options out there. This may be the best of the options, but the reality is, as Patrick has indicated, you've got 130 minutes a month. It's gotta be staffed. And you gotta find a way to pay for it, because clearly the levies that we have don't subsidize the income tax. As we all know, with the bargaining, those costs go up anyway. And there's very little relief in that bargaining process, if one understands Ohio Public Bargaining Law. So this is a challenge for self-employed communities like ours, how do you maintain service? How do you pay for it? Hopefully some future council will sit down and take a look, determine the path of their pursuit. But for right now, this is it.
Hey, Daryl, I remember I was talking that when Patrick was working on the negotiations last time around, that we did reserve a right, that conversation about healthcare cost?
Correct.
Yes. So, so that would be the only option we have going forward, as cost increases, healthcare. And is there a larger participation amount that, you know, I mean, it's first-class healthcare for sure. So that would be something the future council's gonna have to look at. Well, we need to address that, that's, that's a great question. Let's keep in mind that the, you know, the healthcare is collectively bargained for, which, um, and, and the benefits are specified in the contract that, that make change difficult. So what we did this last time around is that, and we started with the police department, and we were able to successfully negotiate into that, the, uh, the creation of a healthcare committee, prime as the administration council and all the collective bargaining units, to talk about ways that if we get our healthcare costs down by changing what we barg, what has been bargained for. To lay out, okay, these are, you know, what happens if you make these changes. So this next go-around, that we're beginning to work on now, will, we will be requesting alternative quotes to show and demonstrate that not only is it, you know, an increase to your other pocket as an employee, not just that it's, and I think that, you know, with the increases that we saw this last time around, I think we managed to get some attention and focus on this issue by the, by the collective bargaining groups. And then there's, um, you know, lots of other things that we look at. In comparison, it used to be that, that, um, one of the features that you could attract employees to municipal government was the healthcare insurance. Uh, but in probably the day, it was ahead of its time. But in today's marketplace, we're finding that, you know, more and more is, um, it has its advantages, but not like it used to. So we're talking to people who are working, who are trying to recruit to come here, and the health insurance is not that, is not that big a deal as it used to be.
Everybody has that.
I'm sorry?
Everybody has it.
Everybody has it. And we, we weren't the ones where, you know, somebody might have a mega deductible, you know, $5,000 deductible plan or something like that, that you're not happy about, you don't have that. But these are things that we wanna show people as to, hey, you don't want your paycheck going down? And we, we all know that when we negotiated for this, that look, if we do nothing, this will be the end of it. Because here's what happened. You could, you don't like that your net pay is reduced because of the increase in cost of healthcare, so then you come back and you say we want a higher adjustment to our, our pay because of that. And that just can't continue to be a circle that goes around and around, because ultimately, then we reach a point where the wages are too high, and then you say, you know what, to what the number of revolts and there are not to provide that level of service. So it's, we're not at that point, we think we've gotten ahead of it. And as the other collective bargaining unit agreements come up, which we have at the end of this year, fire EMS, we will be talking to them about adopting levels that include the frequenties contacts regarding the healthcare.
No final comment? I wanna make this perfectly clear, I'm not advocating that we go outside. Our people do a terrific job, they're great value for cost. But I think sometimes that conversation, as Patrick indicated, is helpful to remind our constituents, this is what you're making. This is what makes the town, the town.
We've gone down that road. Friend, we've gone down that road before, isn't it?
We've gone down that road. Sometimes you have to make it just to remind, well, pitfalls there, or... They're enormous, man. And, you know, I like to think that in terms of our, our people, you know, find it better. And we just don't want our constituents to take it for granted, you know, there's a cost. But at the end of the day, if I'm turning blue, face down in the shade, I don't want a guy that's, would be less than warmer, sticking to you.
Wow, I can't believe with that comment, they want to send a comment? Okay, uh, motions to put this, put this to the agenda?
The vote will move?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? All right. Okay, moving on, amending chapter 155, hiring practices, and delineating the requirement that not post when we publish a newspaper. This is a result of our survey.
This is, survey, the, the survey, the question's part of that, and I think Patrick and I just test to, uh, that, you know, the number of vacancies that we fill. I am confident that zero came from reading the repository, but it went from right then. And then, uh, the time we met, gee, it's just from losing...
You can find this in the paper, they do.
No. You know, the marketplace is much more sophisticated now on how you do people. We're actually approaching the point where some key positions, you gotta go out and prove, you can't wait for them. You have to identify somebody and go out and snatch it, give them away.
As someone who's hired people for many years, who really, who rarely use a newspaper, to be honest with you. I love their jobs, or their pay, you know, it did look, but we've always used job sites in different places going through. You're paying an extreme amount of money to go to use something that people aren't using, so I think this is a last move.
It'll save a lot of money, ads that are so small, we try to keep the character count as low as possible, are still six, seven hundred dollars. We're doing multiple ads.
Per publication, right.
So per publication, it's how the repository is making the money now. Years and years, remember before, there was all those columns on ads, they're on now. When you pick up a paper, if this is not in there, but we were still required by this to keep that posting.
It's on Facebook Marketplace.
Yeah.
Okay, any further comments, question on that? Is there a motion to move this?
The vote will move?
For a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay, moving on, community needing to vote, chapter three, yes?
First, I have a request, send to the planning commission, a recommendation that the regulation for the height of a swimming fence be reduced from five feet to four feet. Conversation with Marty today, he reminded me that four feet is consistent with the International Pro Council Model Code. So this is not a law, but it is actually an industry standard. And there are some practical reasons why this matter is coming before us. A four-foot fence is, shall we say, stock, Marty, as opposed to more difficult five-footers that people generally don't carry inventory into the water. Good summary?
Perfect.
Questions? So again, we're not making a decision tonight, we're sending this recommendation to the planning commission for interview, and it will be delivered to us. Comments or questions?
I have a comment, uh, this has been on the ZBLA public files, I think, three times in the last two years. So I think it's time to put this back to the planning commission, they can change.
Yeah, I've got a personal thing, it's too late for me, because I already paid for five-foot fence. But it is an extreme inconvenience, so I think this is a great idea. But like, as you said, only those don't do it, so you can't do it yourself, so you've gotta pay someone to do it. It increases the cost of everybody, and to get from a four to a five, it's, it's, especially now in today's market, you're waiting months to get it, because they don't stop it. Nobody stops five-foot fences, because nobody uses five-foot fences but us. So, and we don't put too many pools in, so it's not like a big deal, but now people are putting more pools in. So I think this is a great idea, I think this will help our people in saving and getting some things done a little bit quicker. Safety-wise, we're really, four-foot or five-foot, the kid, the idea of a pool fence is so kids don't accidentally walk in. They're not jumping over a four-foot fence, see? So that's, is my side of the things, and right in there with the area. And in the majority of times, you put a five-foot over a four, depending on the amount of area you have, you're talking three to five thousand dollars difference. So, and a lot of wait time. So I think there's a lot of logical reasons to go to four with this. Well, thanks to you, I'll go right now.
Any other questions?
It's time, we've been talking about it a long time.
Okay, well, let's, can I have a motion then, to, uh? Tell me, which is for?
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, this is, I have seven B, is the lighting for the Main Street or Gateway. And remember, we had some discussion, we sent it to the planning commission. We asked it to consider, uh, increasing the pole height to 25 feet, including the base, and to make it as a condition we use. And it just come back to us, and what we need to do tonight is to schedule a public hearing. And it's my understanding that, that public hearing could be conducted on October 18th at 6:45.
I have been reminded that that is the night Gina and Patrick are going to bring it all on budget.
Do you have another night that you can meet this?
Uh, so October 18th is the first night that is late enough that I could meet the 30-day publishing window, so any meeting after that...
Mr. Clark, pick a date.
Yeah, well, how long is that gonna take?
It'll take all about five, but I don't know how long it's gonna take. Because we have people who...
So why can't we just do it at 6:45?
Right?
Why don't we do it at 6:45?
You wanna do it at 6:45?
We can, I understand that.
Or ask the, let's, let's approach this one, let's do it at 6:45.
If, uh, if we have more comments than time, we can always bring it back for additional, for additional. If, if we have more comments than time, we can always bring it back from initial publication requirement. We can kick it to another Monday night. I think still making compliance. On that note? Okay, so we run out of time at seven, we're just going to extend the... Okay, I get a motion for the 18th at 6:45 PM.
Motion.
It's been approved?
Second. For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now the fun part. We're going to revisit our zoning map with 215 persons. What I'd like to do is this is approach it the same way we did it last time, moving through them item by item. And Ben has been in contact with folks. And Ben, I'm gonna rely on you to tell us, although I've got my notes, but tell us whether we're going to authorize action on that alphabetical item. You ready? Okay. Uh, what page do we have this on? Page 25.
I've got page 25.
We've got page 25. The cheat sheet starts at page 25.
Got it, got it.
Then we're over actually on to page 28 as the items are sold in language. So let's go to, can we go off page 28? That's the one we need to match. Okay? Yes, please, just go right ahead.
Letter A, after talking to the property owner, has no special public hearing. They are requesting that this moves forward but flipped from what it was originally proposed to us. So instead of changing the... Sorry. Instead of changing the front half or changing the back half.
Any questions or comments? Is there any property owner here who has an interest?
Would you put us there? Property owners at all?
There are any property owners at all. He tells those white town, next.
Yeah, that's good.
There's nobody here? Okay, let me ask.
Okay, all right. So your recommendation for A is that we adopt the language as presented in the draft, correct? Forty-seven, twenty-one.
That is presented in the draft, yes, which is an amendment from what the planning commission said.
Right, and that is on page 28, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that is okay, everyone? Ben?
Uh, B, no changes.
So that is okay? Go ahead.
Uh, C, Marty and I had a meeting with this property owner over the past week. And from our mind takeaway from that conversation, I hope Marty had the same one, is they would like us to take this off for now. They're considering a different option with their property, potentially even replat the four if it's rezoned. And so at the moment, the current plan is we left it as they will bring back their own zoning application for their property when they decide what they want.
So we will work, I will see, hold. No action. Okay, D?
Uh, D and E, I've recommended to consolidate, so the same property owner, this is the one who had some confusion with Mr. Kitter or whose property it was. It is the chapel's property. So we're seeing on the screen this sort of blue rectangle is the chapel's property. The part that is being rezoned is this bottom hangoff here. So it is the chapel's property. I turn on Zoom here, you can see that just that hangoff is on R70, and the rest of the parcel is on Pena.
So to be clear, it was not in fact Tim's property?
It is not in fact.
Not his property. Okay, so we are going to combine D and E and those who will proceed. Hey, Matt?
That, I'll talk about D at the same time, so I have the same concern. That was Mr. Benefield came and said something about a gas line, some utility even. If there is impact, which I have no reason to believe there isn't, but if there is impact and there may be gas in there, whatever we zone it would change the fact that you can't build on top of the building.
So F and G are okay, proceed. H?
Uh, H and I have consolidated with each other. Their property is becoming the same thing right next to each other. Same with J. Can and Al, just consolidate little ones, method. M has already been rezoned from the New Main Street zoning, so I recommend removing that N and O, no changes. P was sort of mistakenly included in the training I included in the first place, so remove that entirely. Q, no changes. R, and I'll jump down to T. Jeff, you had asked us to put a hole a little deeper. These are the properties at the back of Washington Square. From conversations with administration, they're finding the parcel institutional. Have not reached out to property owner yet to ask if they're coming with that. Any comments on this particular property?
Right over. So we'll place this up, hold.
Yeah.
I thought you wanted to leave it in parts.
Yeah, so if we're leaving it in parts, we would just cut it out.
Cut it? Delete? Remove? Okay. And the same for S?
Uh, S is going to change this. T, um, T is a part, you had said it on hold as well, but it's already a developed parking lot for a office building. It's similar to the chapel, the property you just looked at, where it's a slice of a large parcel, which is a zone, or similar to a parcel. So I would say we let that go forward.
Okay.
U, no changes. V, no changes. W, the parcel number and lot number are technographically incorrect.
One zero zero one zero one nine eight is the correct number?
Yep. X, the property owners have requested that this be removed entirely.
Which one was that? I guess a better question is, which one relates to the parcels in sanctuary? That relates to the parcels in sanctuary?
Um, I do not know off the top of my head. I mean, which one of us?
You can go through the middle, right, through the center, and then at the...
Yeah, that center aisle?
Uh, P. P is... And we did marked P.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, thank you. Go ahead, somebody.
This one is over by the Walsh facility. Uh, Y, condo. So we left this at sort of a hole in the computer because condos, as our zoning code is currently written, don't really fit perfectly to any of our existing zoning conditions. In a conversation with Chairman Bolt, my idea feature about is that perhaps a better way to do this would be to cut the condos for now, and as we continue to move forward in our zoning review, consider making of their own district in the future that more actively reflects what they are.
Thank you.
So move forward that way then?
Order?
So move forward with cutting this town, which is a condo that's to be in the future. Uh, Z, no changes. A, no changes. B, D, no changes. C, C, no changes. D, D, no changes. Uh, E, E, and F, F should be consolidated. All of them should be becoming GTA, and then that added parcel is American Tire, which continues to the area. Uh, G, G, no changes. H, H, and N, N can be consolidated with each other. I, I, no changes. J, J, no changes. K, K should be cut entirely. L, L can be consolidated with J, J. M, M, no changes. Very good, and N? O, O, true, U, U, and W, W are all a collection of parcels around the hostile apartment price park. They are all becoming the same thing. I'm not sure why they were separated into the individual amendments, but they can all be consolidated to one. This area is becoming GTA. Uh, B, D, no changes. X, X, no changes. Y, Y, this is St. Paul's, should be cut, the one we're supposed to... Z, Z, no changes. A, A, triple A, no changes. Triple B, no changes. And triple C was already rezoned with the Main Street, so it should be...
Just confirm, Y, Y was the simple family of all just that, the running out, St. Paul's park.
We missed my understanding that should the use of those change? St. Paul's will need to be back. We're going to just...
Thanks, Ben.
If we do both connect all of these changes, we will need to send it back to the planning commission to reconsider as this initially came too much.
Say, if anybody wants to spend more time on this, are you sure? And then I will, you see, the majority will, motion to send this to the planning commission.
Second, looking for second?
I'm looking for second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sure. Okay, thank you, Ben, thank you. This was, this was a huge back office of the...
Well done. You did a great job.
And wanted to talk to people and stuff. Terrific. So thank you, Ben. I think we've had a great presentation there.
Credit to Marty and Bruce Brenner.
You know, just as, just as a final little comment, I think, you know, one of the things that the council just underscores how critical the back office entity is, when you look at the list of properties we're changing and realigning, you know, this, this is a big deal. And just, right, the administration, Ben, and Marty, get it done. Some of this stuff's pretty old.
Look, and the turnaround from all of our questions from that original meeting, it was quick, too.
Yeah. That was a solid one. Yeah, absolutely. Good job.
Okay, I conclude this agenda. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
The vote will move?
Right second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. At this time, I would like to call the regular council meeting board, September 13, 2021. The time is 7:44 PM.
Reverend Fonte wants to do the...
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come before the peoples. And remember that 9-1-1 was 20 years ago. We don't ever want to forget the sacrifices of all the men and women and the shock and all that we had experienced. Let's not forget. Let's remember to be loving and compassionate to one another. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ben, please call.
Member Schreger?
Here.
Member Reiner?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Schreger?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
And number one?
Number Foltz. Is that number six?
Motion to excuse member Foltz?
Uh-huh.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to adjourn? All right, for your consideration, I need a motion this second to approve as presented. Minutes, August 23rd, City Council. Minutes, August 23rd, public hearing. August 20, August 2021, Finance Report, paying stock ownership change for liquor permit at 1474 Riverdance.
Seven.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to adjourn? All right, at this time, if you wish to address counsel, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Where, great 4127 East Maple, North Hampton, Ohio. How many of you sitting before us right now have reviewed, have looked at the recent citywide survey for 2021?
Mr. Trepp, I would like to say that I have. I've got a detailed analysis. In fact, just wanted to drop your...
Sorry, you're right there. May I start over, Mr. President?
Please, get a new start.
Yeah, have at it.
Uh, how many of you have, have studied the 2021 citywide survey? Seeing only one?
No.
That's Harper. Oh, two, two. Wow, three, four. Boy, now they're coming. Now they're coming. Surprising to me. But anyway, let this be a lesson, that it took so long for you to, you know, raise your hand. But anyway, to me, that's kind of a himself for anyone that worked on the, on the survey or even the residents that spent a total of forty and a half hours of public commitment in completing it, that, what, three, four city before the beauty. So like other surveys of the past, I'm sure we're going to soon find this in file 13 or just merely taking up space on the, in the computer world. Why? Because results of this survey did not meet the expectations of North Hampton City Government. Take, for example, the steady decline of citizen confidence in city council. Pretty much solidifies the views of this speaker's remarks of government of North Hampton or the past 101 hearings and refutes, has some revolts comment of young people becoming active in city government. Between ages of 18 and 34, there were a total of 85 respondents with only 12 being between the ages of 18 and 24. Sir, pay raises, don't do it, other than to appease our current members of council. I do 28 liter comments of the chairperson of the 2021 North Hampton Master File, Master Plan. My enthusiasm was quite high for attending the citizens' sessions of their meetings. However, this quickly vanished after learning the chairperson and roughly 70% of the spirit committee were non-members of North Hampton. I then revisited the minutes of the 28 council meeting and my decision said an immediate no to any citizen meetings. Remarks made to the city council regarding the 2021 city master plan, and I read from minutes of that meeting. Now the question that we are posing, the what, is what do we want to hear? Do we want to become and stay a small-sleeve, sleepy little senior citizen for the future? Or do we want to compete against the Greens, the Luisters, the Kents, and Nidaike Hudson? And then we have an interruption by doctor woman Warren, who says, "Thank you." Back to the speech. When I read in the paper, this is, when I read in the paper that we got a huge chunk of people business, I was joyful, but I'm grieving, but I'm grieving. of people business, I was joyful, but I'm greedy, but I'm greedy. I want the whole thing. What were we missing? Why couldn't we have gotten the headquarters? End quote. Mayor Wilder, Administrator Bioreo, and Councilman Peterson, revoke. I am greedy. Is that the mindset of this city, uh, government, of our present government? I am greedy. It sure looks like it. It's often been said by councilmen, revoke. After councilmen revoke, negative comments by public speakers may result in opinions being created in the minds of those representing new business, et cetera. What could be more negative than "I am greedy"? Aggressive is one thing, but "I am greedy" should not be in the mindset of North Canton Government. Mr. Mayor, or any other cops person running for reelection, as I look at the county table by remarks tonight, I suggest that these may be a tool for reelection. They have failed badly, as greed is not in the minds of North Canton citizens who put and work for the betterment, who put effort and work for the betterment of North Canton. Further ado, comparing Main Street of ten years ago to our present Main Street suggests that greed doesn't work. Greed does not work. Mr. Mayor, when you were elected, sorry you're not here today, but when you were elected, we expected transparency and growth along Main Street. We have anything but. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let the record reflect, I think it was animated at the beginning of the session, that we, if you was curious, how many members reviewed the, the survey? Did we not do that in an open meeting?
We talked about survey.
Yeah. We did, alright, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
We talked about it, because that's why we were there, to their party. That's, that's just what it's there for.
Did you miss that meeting? Okay, anyone else wishing to address counsel? Chuck?
For possible three or seven very strange counties, North Canton, Ohio. In a much thirteen twenty seventeen repertory story, Superintendent Jeff Lindorff has quoted as stated, and I quote, "The existing ten point three acre green town area property is too small for an elementary school and would need roughly nineteen acres." Close, close. The reference to needing nineteen acres, no doubt, comes from guidelines detailed in the Ohio School Design Manual authored by the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. Per the OSDM, the new elementary reduction required nineteen point eight eight acres, as this is going to have nine hundred and eighty-eight students. How is it that the nine point six acre Charlotte property is now chosen for North Canton's young children? A sizable portion of the Charlotte property is included in property restrictions adopted by the Stark County Health Department in 2002. The restrictions identified in Resolution Three dash two thousand and two result from the presence of PCE, PCE, and other various dog products and water samples from a number of laundry wells within an area defined in the resolution. One must ask, what is the financial impact of this incredibly flawed decision by the North Canton City School District to build the Charlotte, the Charlotte site for citizens, nearby institutions, and businesses? Well, first of all, we got the added mitigation costs for the building of three hundred thousand dollars estimated at this moment. That's added construction cost. The North Canton Library is struggling about losing their parking. They have gone out and attempting to purchase four residential properties on Portage, and in the bizarro arrangement, then turn around and donating those properties to the city schools. Anyway, the four parcels, along with spending a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for their own new parking lot, is costing them eight hundred and forty thousand dollars approximately. The North Canton YMCA daycare has been forced to start a fundraising campaign to raise a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to relocate their first playground. The North Canton Heritage Society, about eight years ago, had a fundraiser to raise a hundred thousand dollars to build a new entrance to the Portage Building. Now that's going to be all just torn down when they tear down the Portage School. Chase Bank has been chased off their parking facilities and have made other arrangements. In previous commentary, I have figured road riding for Charlotte would cost an estimated eight hundred thousand dollars. How the record's request has uncovered plans that city officials want much more than simple road riding for Charlotte. Actual costs are far from my previous estimate, and what city laws might mean is my money to say the least. Estimated, uh, Charlotte Street Improvement Project, almost two point seven million dollars. A million of that is for a turnaround or a circle, whatever you want to call it. It's a waste. It would also require acquisition of properties. They've already purchased a small parcel on the corner, northeast corner of Wilman and Charlotte for seventy-five hundred. The CIC did that. Did this council relate, consult on that? The northwest corner of Wilman and Charlotte will need to be purchased. It's an eighty-seven year old woman. Nobody's even talked to her. Who wants a traffic circle coming right by your kitchen window? The big dogs, uh, unknown is the Spencer property. It will have to be acquired in total and parcel, I'm estimating one point two million dollars. A traffic impact study has already been expended for fourteen thousand dollars. These added costs attributed solely because the North Canton School District insists on constructing a school on the undersized and contaminated nine point six acre Charlotte property and nowhere else. Total is five point, almost four million dollars. You could build elsewhere and save that kind of money. North Canton citizens for safe schools have advocated for building a Norwood Elementary property or elsewhere. Lastly, the Portage Charlotte rounded up is an utter waste of tax-free dollars and will not alleviate expected traffic congestion. And I will add, I've been looking at that myself for fifteen years. If you acquire the last four or five parcels on the north side of Portage, you can make a straight line into Charlotte, and that'd be a much more functional way to approach it.
Just, uh, bring your times up, thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, just hand them to the clerk and go pass them on to us.
I'm sorry?
Just hand them to the clerk, go pass them on to us. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address counsel, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. It's hard to follow. Alright, moving on. Uh, may I have a motion that's second to read by Title Only Ordinance Fifty-three dash twenty-one?
Vote.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city of North Canton to prepare and submit an application to be a private public works commission for a grant for the Charlotte Street Improvement Project, further authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with North Canton City Schools for said grant, and if awarded, authorizing the mayor upon more control approval to enter into an agreement for the receipt of said grant and declaring the same to be the...
Make the chairman, Fonte.
Uh, we were talking about this in the meeting of the whole, and this is pertaining to the Charlotte Street Project in conjunction with the school district. We're applying for a grant for one point five mil with the, uh, Public Works Commission, and it's going to do a lot of work on Portage as well as the roundout, big number of the bigger vehicles that we were concerned about, school bus, semi slash hard truck. So it's on the verge of getting enough people, but I'm just, uh...
Before you move, can I make a motion to suspend the order for committee report?
Uh, make the motion.
Uh, we, the rule is given for voting, can they be adjusted? So that constitutes a report.
You're gonna, but you have no answer.
We have not yet for a minute.
That's correct.
Let's have that motion.
I agree. It's your pleasure.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Joe.
I would, I would, uh, committee report. We should go, suspend rule.
Alright, so, uh...
I'm just gonna make the motion, suspend the...
Yeah, close. One, we, one, for all the items are...
Set it down, Ben.
This one is on the bus?
Yes.
For items seven, seven D, seven C, seven D.
Did you say C?
Yeah.
Z, D, and F.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second? Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, thank you, Joe. Okay, uh, Chairman Fonte, we, we good?
We're good.
Okay, uh, may I have the motion that's second to adopt the first reading, ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-one?
Where is second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, may I have the motion that's second to suspend those counsel requiring three readings?
The vote moves.
Where is second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, and finally, the motion that's second to adopt ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-one, under section.
Turn it over.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alright, may I have the motion that's second to read by Title Only Fifty-four dash twenty-one?
The vote moves.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the city of North Canton to be appropriated for current expenses during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
So these were two expenses, uh, twelve, thirteen thousand and so on, um, regarding the policeman's salary requirement, and then the wash and the sewer department, um, and reallocation. You have other questions, I'll interrupt.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, may I have the motion that's second to suspend those counsel requiring three readings?
Seven.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, and finally, the motion that's second to adopt fifty-four dash twenty-one, under section. Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alright, may I have the motion that's second to read by Title Only Ordinance Fifty-five dash twenty-one?
Can I move? Four seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance to approve and adopt current placement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton and declare the same to be the...
Thank you, Chairman, sir. Alright, we just discussed this in the committee of the whole, uh, this is reconciling with the state laws. Any comments, questions? Can we move down?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. May I have the motion that's second to suspend those counsel?
Turn it over.
Where is second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, and finally, the motion that's second to adopt ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-one, under section.
The vote moves.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And may I have the motion that's second to read by Title Only Ordinance Fifty-six dash twenty-one? Sorry, you.
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amended chapter one thirty-five Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Service, specifically section one thirty-five point oh three, personnel of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to increase the position cap for emergency medical technician and paramedic firefighter.
Okay, we went over this in the committee. Director Bioreo told us why, moving into a full-time professional, uh, staff. So if there's no further comment, um, may I have the motion that's second to adopt the first reading, ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-one?
The vote moves.
Where is second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alright, may I have the motion that's second to read by Title Only Ordinance Fifty-seven dash twenty-one?
The vote moves.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amended chapter one fifty-five Personnel Regulations, specifically section one fifty-five point oh three Hiring Practices of the Codified Ordnances of the city of North Canton to eliminate the requirement that job postings be published in the...
Alright, and this is direct result of a survey question that was put out to constituents. It's going to save us a large sum of money and which this survey was reviewed in an open, public meeting. May I have the motion that's second to adopt first reading, ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-one?
The vote moves.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alright, may I have the motion that's second to read by Title Only Resolution Thirteen dash twenty-one?
The vote moves.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Ben?
A resolution submitting amendments to the city of North Canton's onico, specifically chapter eleven thirty-three, Single Family and Two Family Residential District regulations, subsection eleven thirty-three point oh E, swimming pool, for consideration in accordance with chapter eleven eighty-one, the codified ordinances and declaring the same to be declared.
Thank you, Chairman, where is...
As we discussed, we're referring to the planning commission recommendation that they would reduce the height of their fence and swimming pool from five feet to four feet consistently during... Is there any initial discussion? Motion, I'll move it down to first reading?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. May I have the motion that's second to suspend those counsel requiring three readings?
The vote moves.
Sorry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. And finally, the motion that's second to adopt Resolution Thirteen dash twenty-one, under section.
The vote moves.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Alright, Department of Courts, Deputy Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, uh, Congressman Fonte mentioned, it is hard to believe September 1st was twenty years ago, um, but I think on that terrible day, you know, we did all find out how important first responders were to us. So in honor of that, last Friday, we have a first responder appreciation dinner held over at Dogwood, and I'd like to just, uh, thank those that were involved in making that so nice for our police and fire and their families. That was Dan Oss, from Young and Associates, we had Coots Insurance, Mission Barbecue, Derek Montero Ray with Kona Ice, and EJ Delmanis. And they all donated their services, food was all donated, they had snow cones and things with Kona Ice for the kids and families, and somebody there making little blue animals. So it was a nice appreciation night Friday night. Um, I just want to give an update on the Dogwood project. So the Orchard Lot, which is the, um, Mason's Lot, the Sonic Lot, um, on Orchard, it's underway. If you've driven past there, you'll see that the concrete curving was finished, built the pathway, and they have poured the path for the, the pavilion that will be constructed on there. Um, as discussed before, where we were in a holding pattern with the EPA approval for the rest of the lot conservation district, that has now been granted approval. So I talked before about the lot quantity, lots, all the issues that we were working on, they were working on. We've gotten all of that, um, approved, uh, with all the, we have EPA requirements of the middles. So they are mobilizing with the excavation team on Monday, this coming Monday. Um, they're going to be dual-working on multiple areas of the site, finishing up Orchard Lot, heading over there to the Dogs' Clean Ground. Important date to note, um, September 22nd to October 12th, they have been milling out the Seven Street Parking Lot, so we're going to relocate rentals if they want to relocate. Um, and just so everyone knows that, will be the parking lot, uh, reconstruction or new construction over there. Uh, so I have, the project schedule now, we're just going to go full course, we have full approval, and we're looking at, you know, for October, November, of course, weather permitting, so fingers crossed that, uh, we have some dry, warm weather so we can continue. And then just quickly, um, sort of like personnel HR update, wanted to let everyone know, we had a great, um, city, all city employee training we held here at the Civic Center. It was, uh, we called it respect training, it was inclusive of sexual harassment, hostile work environment, diversity sensitivity training, and that's really important in today's environment to make sure all employees are up to speed on how to be in the workplace and be very respectful, so that was great attendance. Um, and this Wednesday, here also at the Civic Center, we are going to our first official city health fair. This is sponsored by MMO, with a generous grant that they're giving us, and we're going to have our employees come here. We have forty-one employees that voluntarily registered to have a biometric screening done, and that'll give them a personalized health statement. Thank you, Mr. President. As, uh, Councilman Fonte mentioned, it is hard to believe September one was twenty years ago, um, but I think on that terrible day, you know, we did all find out how important first responders were to us. So in honor of that, last Friday, we had a first responder appreciation dinner held over at Dogwood, and I'd like to just, uh, thank those that were involved in making that so nice for our police and fire and their families. That was Dan Oss from Young and Associates, we had Coops Insurance, Mission Barbecue, Derek Montero Ray with Kona Ice, and EJ Delmanis. And they all donated their services. Food was all donated. They had snow cones and things with Kona Ice for the kids and families and somebody there making little blue animals. So it was a nice appreciation night Friday night. Um, I just want to give an update on the Dogwood project. So the Orchard Lot, which is the, um, Mason's Lot, the Sonic Lot, um, on Orchard, it's underway. If you've driven past there, you'll see that the concrete curving was finished, built the pathway, and they have poured the path for the, the pavilion that will be constructed on there. Um, as discussed before, where we were in a holding pattern with the EPA approval for the Reserve Lot Conservation District, that has now been granted approval. So I talked before about the lot quantity, lots, all the issues that we were working on, uh, they were working on. We've gotten all of that, um, approved, uh, with all the, we have EPA requirements on the seminals. So they are mobilizing with the excavation team on Monday, this coming Monday. Um, they're going to be dual-working on multiple areas of the site, finishing up Orchard Lot, heading over there to the Dog's Clean Ground. Important date to note, um, September twenty-second to October twelfth, they are going to mill out the Seventh Street parking lot. So we're going to relocate rentals if they want to relocate, um, and just so everyone knows that, will be the parking lot, uh, reconstruction or new construction over there. Uh, so I have the project schedule now. We're just going to go full course. We have full approval and we're looking at, you know, for October, November, of course, weather permitting. So fingers crossed that, uh, we have some dry, warm weather so we can continue. And then just quickly, um, sort of like personnel HR update, wanted to let everyone know. We had a great, um, city, all city employee training we held here at the Civic Center. It was, uh, we called it respect training. It was inclusive of sexual harassment, hostile work environment, diversity sensitivity training, and that's really important in today's environment to make sure all employees are up to speed on how to be in the workplace and be very respectful. So that was great attendance. Um, and this Wednesday, here also at the Civic Center, we are going to our first official city health fair. This is sponsored by MMO with a wellness grant that they're giving us, and we're going to have our employees come here. We have forty-one employees that voluntarily registered to have a biometric screening done, and that'll give them a personal, personalized health statement. We have multiple health vendors coming from Y M C A to Cowar House Gym, Fit Ones, a personal training place, Lady Super Fitness, Fresh Time. Uh, so the goal is really to just increase wellness awareness in all our employees and, you know, to be the most healthy, fit public service we can be to serve our community. Uh, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Captain. Director of Administration.
You're all welcome. I'm coming, man. Don't worry.
Sure.
What do you say?
I'm just saying that you're welcome.
It's Wednesday, seven AM, which is pretty young.
Lord.
Thank you, Captain. Well, let's remember, Flex Mayor Wilder has joined us, and with that, do you have any remarks?
Yes, thank you. Uh, apologies for the delay. I was at another meeting at the, uh, North Canton City School District for their F L episodes. I wanted to see what they had to offer for their master plan. Really, just a comment on, uh, on the nine eleven events that occurred in our city and in the county. Uh, I want to thank Canals from Young and Coops for, uh, their family appreciation day for, uh, evening for first responders. Uh, they had some activities and meals provided for all of our first responders and families on Friday night at Dogwood Shelter. Uh, I want to thank, uh, them for paying that time to do that. This is their second year for, for doing it, and that they plan on continuing and supporting our first responders. Also, I want to thank Speed Two for, uh, providing the finance, once again, from Splinter Freedom, uh, project, uh, for that facility. And some people may not realize, but, uh, St. Paul's Church, uh, twelve fifteen on Wednesdays, they go take periodic visits. Uh, had the opportunity to attend a couple of those, and they're very, uh, very grateful to think about that. And really, just, uh, from the time that, uh, from that weekend, uh, it was just a time, I think, for reflection, and, and each in our own way, whether it was a community sponsoring event or a civic life event, there were a lot number of things going on in the county that we all could participate in or visit. But, uh, hopefully, that will be a time that we won't forget, and that, uh, but our lives go on, and, uh, we'll continue to do the good work that we're going to do. So thank you very much for that time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, uh, next up, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Um, I just want to highlight the income tax we see. I keep a pretty close eye on, with all of the changes in the past four years with the final deadlines and the cell working and withholding involved, and so we've really been watching not just, um, where we are here today. Because past four has been, um, a little bit difficult to project months and months because of all those deadlines that keep changing. However, year to date, um, we are on target. We're still have an increase showing of two point eight percent at this point, and then we started just digging a little bit deeper and deciding where are we with withholding, uh, versus the individual versus the net profit. And so on, I don't know if you can pull it up, but I just say if you have a chance to look at your graph in the report, I added just a small statistic on the bottom of the income tax page. Our withholding over the past six years has been right around sixty-six percent, and we're at sixty-three percent. So that tells us our businesses are still doing very well in North Canton. Um, individuals are doing right around twenty-two percent, and they're at twenty-five percent. So our individuals in North Canton are also still, um, holding jobs and doing well. And then our net profits average around twelve percent, and they're right at twelve percent. So we feel pretty good about, strong about our projection. We don't have any changes to that, um, just yet.
Good news. Thank you, Captain. Alright, next up, Chairman Grant.
Thank you, Mrs. Price. Very happy to report two thirty tonight we finished our paving portion and most needed. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Uh, actually, about a little bit of a schedule, fine last call was supposed to be a week ago, Wednesday or Thursday.
That went a lot better than expected, too.
Pardon me?
Went a lot better than expected.
Yeah, it went, it went very well. Uh, got a lot to clean up to do. Talked to the contractor about that tonight. You know, tomorrow we're getting a bit of chunks of pavement that we shove into the gutter, and then, uh, breakdown will be low, the sidewalk, the whole way, so, uh, the orange and the, uh, streets will, uh, so we'll battle a lot with that one in the next few days. And then Monday or Tuesday, we're looking at our permanent stripe. One, uh, like that stripe, because you're seeing just the very light dashes to, to show the, the line configurations. We don't want to put that too dark because it shows through and looks unsightly. Yeah, why not?
Well done, Frank.
Thank you.
The finish is very sleek. That's the polymer on top.
That's the, the fur polymers, yes, three quarters of those. Beautiful.
Awesome. Thank you, Michael. Okay, Counselor.
Uh, as part of the budget efforts this year, uh, my office with help from administration and every department in the city performed a kind of, uh, review of all these specialty softwares that we had and utilize, uh, throughout the city. And after reviewing all those, we sort of put together a sketch of an action plan that hopefully we move forward to get, uh, more money for our buck, um, and save the city money in the process.
Like that.
Very excellent. That it? That's enough. Thank you, Ben. Member Ware.
Okay. Um, and I know I said it last time, but I just had some, um, a question from different constituents, and I had that contact Marty, Rob, and, um, even Pat, and it just, it's so nice. You guys always get back to me and you're giving funny messages half the time, and I just appreciate your, your comments and you explaining it, and, um, you just put it in language that I think I can understand, and then read these, like, just pass on to my constituents. So I just appreciate that because timely correspondence is, is a lot of times these days, and it means a lot. Um, so thank you again for that. And the same with Gina, uh, we've been talking about the budget, and she reached out to all of us, and they know we've taken advantage of that, and I appreciate that because for you to ask and say, you know, not only would do each department's one, they're the experts, so we totally rely on that, and I think we have a really good budget process, but also as us trying to say, maybe what we want in our, um, in our certain areas or even as a city as whole, or looking at the report that, you know, we, we've just gone over, and what do we want as a city and going forward, that was really, I think, helpful for you to just kind of say to us that. I mean, I think we're really in a good position because, like I said, in my, I said, where I have really good parks, I just had, um, some football courts. I had some new playground equipment. I have some really good streets. Yes, we're looking at some zoning things, but a lot is really good, and we're fortunate as a city to say that. But I appreciated you asking, and even though we know it's the mayor's budget, it's important that we all agree, and it doesn't look good if he says, no, they're going to write anything the council say or want. So I think that was, um, important. Um, and then Ben, you also asked us to come in and talk about the council budget, and, you know, and we met with you with that, and it was really a good discussion because we would talk about a few different things, you know, that maybe we might be looking at, that maybe were on the budget. And, um, and I had talked to Gina about that today, and we even talked about the dog park and looking up some things in an area of the city that maybe there, you know, isn't a dog park, and like you said, maybe there's a grand opportunity, um, how to convey more information. Here I've talked about news letters and different things, and, but that doesn't happen if you're not asking, and so I appreciate, you know, that very much. So, um, I just wondered, I like that because I don't think that happens in all governments. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for your service. Appreciate the input. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Member of all.
Yes. You know, it's interesting. There are some things, there are pains, and then there are informed pains. Main Street is a challenge. Particularly, that section of Main Street that extends from twenty-seventh street south, because that is the oldest part of Main Street. And what we know is that, yes, there are some vacancies there. We also know that not only are the structures older, but the lots are smacked. It constitutes a challenge for business use. We also know that when building owner wishes to sell, he may also have a very unrealistic estimation that the property is valid, which leaves it vacant for a period of time. As I look at Main Street today, uh, I have to factor in COVID. And what effect has it had on certain types of businesses that might be suitable candidates for some of the businesses, empty spots along Main Street? I don't know. But I do know that small business has taken a hit in the last eighteen months. There are constituents who are cast for me that their unlicensed, uninformed comments have no impact on the outside. But I can tell you this, right now, if we have a constituent with us tonight, that seemingly the, kept the mayor from coming into our community, that could have been an attraction for other businesses. So kind of...
Can I stand up and think about?
So the sort of comments, the sort of comments do matter.
You know better than that.
We have had constituents up here who are against everything. And they voiced their opinions against every economic development initiative we have taken over the last thirty-six months. One in particular was adding a lock door. It's terrible. I talked to one of the proprietors, one of the business sellers last week, and you know what he told me? He said, can we do this again? I made in one day net an entire month's rent. Now, if you're a small business capital, that's how you weather the lean months, by paying the money you make at Main Street. His, our, his request was, can you do a couple more of these for me? To see me through the lean time? I listened to this. People complain about the... You don't want to fix the road. You don't want to do anything. Alright, let's not fix it. And when the lease is up and they go away, then we'll wring our hands and wonder how the hell we get five hundred jobs back? Or do we just do nothing and ignore the practical implications? And then when our constituents are complaining about gridlock, we'll say, well, James, we listen to you. You know, I would argue, quite frankly, that we haven't earned jobs. The fact of the matter is, I think you've done particularly poor job in looking at how things get connected and how they work. Well, you can laugh, because I'm laughing at you, Mr. Trump. And I want to mention that my name, but frankly, you've been against everything. You've been against everything. And yet, everybody around here is trying to put the pieces in place to make things happen. I can't make it happen in the snap of a finger. It won't work. But what I can do is create an environment where we're trying to help small businesses and large ones. Why is it important? We had a discussion about the estimate. By and large, that is funded by income tax. And without income tax, then we're confronted with very difficult challenges. Do we raise more income tax? We gotta go to voters for that. Or do we discontinue the service? Or discontinue a service? You know, Larry, all can decide. You, you come up with no solutions. You know, it's like tonight, Stanford's getting, nobody read the community survey. Well, you were surprised because people have. We have, and in fact, Ben noticed that I've done more than just reading. And I think the rest of the council passed, too. We heard mention tonight, the dog park, prominently featured. One of our, one of our asks, we looked at it for communication, and what we discovered was, we have, there is a communications issue that we're not really sure how to get our arms around. But it's there. And one of the things we discovered is that advertising the route for our vet communications isn't particularly effective. So, you know, all can decide, Larry. I think you need to give people a little more credit than what you give them. And at the end of the day, I think all of us are trying to create this robust community. Let me close on this. This group, and I'm going to come back to Mr. Osborne in a second, this group knows one thing. No action, no action option will give you twelve and fourteen. You're twenty years behind it. It's coming unless you can figure out a way to, to maintain this community. It doesn't mean that, well, we're, we want to be Hudson. I don't think we're ever going to be Hudson. But what we can do is a vibrant Main Street with some businesses large and small, and I think that's the vision. But the vision isn't helped when we have people who don't bother to think. Now, one more thing. This school business, Mr. Osborne, is a board education. It's their decision, not despite us. There were three members up this time. Nobody ran. You had a committee. You could have taken one of those individuals, gotten petition, and put him on the board. You neglected to do it. So don't stand here and say, this is my responsibility, because it is not. We are working with the school system. Now, hold on a second. We listen to you all the time. I gave the last word. Put somebody on the board of education. Let him attend in one meeting a month. It's a huge burden. You didn't do it. Don't complain to me if you're not responsible. I'm here for one reason, because I disagreed with the taxpayer. I took out a petition. I ran. So don't tell me that other people can't do that, because frankly, they can. Reason, they're just too lazy to do it. It's easier, why complain than to do the hard work of being a candidate? Now, I'm going to come back to this. If we want businesses on Main Street, the very thing that Mr. Turk is complaining about, you can't be running around this community, calling up businesses and telling them, don't come. Which you did. You own that, Mr. Osborne. Nobody else does.
It's contaminated.
Hold on a second. I, don't interrupt me. That site was renewable. Yes, it was. And you know it was.
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry, Mr. Trump. It was. So if you want businesses, you can't do what he does, Larry. Don't worry about it.
Larry, Larry.
I didn't interrupt you. You've been around with me before, and I did. I said, maybe just four, five minutes.
Okay, you can start over, too. Hey, Larry, I order. Go ahead, Mr. Trump.
Glad, Larry. You are as sick as they come. You want to ask for it?
Time to go.
Huh?
That concludes the comments.
You were dope last week. I called you last week.
Time to go. You got your work under you. Get out.
Yes.
Alright, Governor, you're up. Should we stand up and do, should we do jumping jacks or something now? Couple things, uh, you know, Larry did bring up about the, uh, survey, and he notes here, and he did leave that. That's where we, we shouldn't be putting it together and make sure that we go over that, and then we push back where we need to be. So I hope we're doing that. Come on. Alright, secondly, uh, Stuart Littner's in town. Uh, you guys want to hear what he had to say?
Yeah.
He was in town, uh, for TAP last week. I had met him in the meeting before to make sure he was going to be in town the next week, so he can meet with us. So, um, so some of the things that, that we mentioned here, I think, he had a good discussion. There was, there was TAP. I've got my little notes here. There, he, uh, there's a lot of notes here. I'm only going to read just a couple of things. What do you...
That site was renewable. Yes, it was. And you know it was. I'm sorry, Trump. It was. So if you want businesses, you can't do what he does, Larry. Don't worry about it.
Larry, Larry.
I didn't interrupt you. You've been around with me before. And I said, maybe just four, five minutes.
Okay, you can start over too. Okay, Larry, I don't want to order. Go ahead, man.
Glad. You are as sick as they come. You want to ask for it?
Time to go.
Huh? Thank you for your comments.
You were a joke last week.
I'm good. I called him last week.
Time to go. You got your order to get out.
Yes.
All right, number two, you're up. Should we stand up and do jumping jacks or something now? Couple things, uh, you know, Larry did bring up about the, uh, survey and he knows here, and he did leave that. That's where we, we should be putting it together and make sure that we go over that and then push back where we need to be. So I hope we're doing that this month. All right. Secondly, uh, Stuart Lippner's in town. Uh, you guys want to hear what he has to say? He was in town, uh, for TAP last week. I had met him before to make sure he was going to be in town the next week. So happy to meet with us. So, um, so some of the things that, that we mentioned here, I think he had a good discussion. There was TAP. I've got my little notes here that he, uh, there's a lot of notes here. But I'm only going to do just a couple of things. What he had to go over. Um, he was very forthcoming, very honest. And I mean, if you've ever met the guy, he's the nicest guy. It's like you wouldn't even know who he is. He owns a hundred of these. He's the leading owner of industrial property in the nation. And you wouldn't know him if you sit right out there. So he does, and, and all you gotta do is ask him what he gives. And we've asked him several times outside of this project. Remember, it's business for him. But he's a good businessman. See what he does. But things that we've asked for over the years, like moving to the guard shop and we wanted to say that, sure, take one. Uh, Christmas tree, when they cut it down, I'll give you this to fix it. What he did, five thousand dollars a share for, uh, for fireworks when they were canceled, brought back. So the guy does, you know, uh, he does give, but you gotta ask. You know, we have to ask him sometime. But getting back to the Hoover District here, because this is his business. This is what he does. But he was very upbeat on this. Um, I'm just going to redo some of the couple of things. The goal of North Kent Properties is to get this done as close to the original plan as possible. So he still has a hundred and thirty lofted housing units. Um, continue, continue to educate our community. Populations are not developed. Yes, sir. Follow the market rather than chasing the dream. So what does the market need? That, looking at that. North Kent Project remains desirable. So he does feel that this is a project that is desirable. The goal is to accomplish multiple projects with the site. Multi-story office fronts are hard to develop, retail apartments, but he, he will finish the project. He said that the apartments and the rent, the restaurant, the other ones. Right after? Okay. Now just keep going on, because there is some things he needs. Um, how can we better communicate the vision of the North Kent Project? Well, we, we need the message of the long-term view. We need a communication program. And at the end of that, we decided that that's what we want to do. We want to make sure we have a communication project planned to communicate to all the residents of what's going on. You know, if I'm not telling you this right here, you would not know that. And everybody has a different opinion that, you know, this thing's not going to happen. Why isn't the city doing this? When the city doesn't own it? We all know that here in this room. Um, is residential program, uh, programming always the highest and best use? He thinks it is for North Kent. There is a big need for that. I think we all agree with that. The population, the younger professionals are key ingredients to the housing component of this project. The Hoover District can't compete with Golden Village District for retail. So you gotta make it other things. You gotta make, you know, cool stuff. The housing component of the Hoover District is still a go. What is the success of this project impact on the, uh, other property? North Kent has an important attributes to be viewed as a cool spot to live. The walkable safety, good schools, field parks, the whole build out of the live work kind of thing. And he's saying a lot of this stuff. So he believes that this town is worth back. The development of the property should be aligned with the current criteria needs of the community. And, uh, what else does he have? So how can we best help him? He's going to try to get his historic tax credits. They ran out. He's trying to get back. Um, we're on our way to possibly getting him some of what he needs. He needs some, some type of grants and so on. Um, we have to work with everybody to get that. That's. The day we have a tax credit is the day we resume the project. He mentioned that. So when we get these tax credits, uh, let's see. When IRG gets the capital staff, which means, which means his tax credits, it's incentives that we have. Uh, we can finish the project in six to twelve months or get going with the project in six to twelve months. He cares a lot about this project and it's not going away. So he said a lot of good things that we're still in the game here. So those who think it's just going to sit there and go away, um, you know, have to pay their fees, I guess. So this was at a meeting that we had. It's called, uh, Talk About Potentials. It's called TAP. And Randy Smith invited him and I'm sure he got there. And, you know, again, many, many times for lunch, he's a really good guy. I might not hold him to that, but we gotta help him. We gotta help him get there. And it doesn't mean just give him all kinds of money. That means we gotta find every little piece that we can, just like every other community is doing, to get what they need. So I hope we can move forward on that. Any questions about that?
I do. During, during the meeting, was a dollar value attached to this?
Nope. We didn't talk any dollars at all. That's because you know some different back. There wasn't a dollar explanation.
I don't question. Oh, I'm not that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mary didn't answer that.
Yes, he was asking, uh, they're going for five million dollars of historic tax credit. He was asking three percent, uh, commitment from the city to support it.
Three percent five million?
Uh, five million, which would be a hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm already working on a plan for assembly that hopefully would not in much cost to the city.
So. Five, five million is not going to be, it's, it's a start. It's, I'm not going to call it a good start, but hold on. It's, it's a start. I, I guess the point I'm getting to is, is I think we all know right around what is, what this is going to cost and what's going to be up there. Um, and I'm sure, listen, I've never met Stu and I have, you know, I'm sure he's a very nice man. But based on what has happened in the past, especially the eighty-five loan and that twenty-three million, twenty-five million, we didn't see a dime of that. At all. I mean, and I understand that there's some other factors, but, you know, I'm a little, um, simple at this point. And, and I do understand why he thinks the original project is the best way to go because the alternative is to tear their whole face down. That costs probably to exceed what it would take to develop. So I, I'm hopeful, but I'm, but I'm very simple and I really think, I know this three percent of five million and the city's contribution, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Listen, I'm not, I'm not a finance guy, but I, I guarantee you the city's portion is going to be a lot more than that. Daryl, you have it down.
You got it here. Uh, to answer your question, I think the project estimate ranges between forty-five and fifty million dollars in total. He would look to, for public assistance in probably two forks. The first would be, uh, the first would be through the historic preservation tax credit. The second would be the use of the downtown redevelopment district. The ratio of assistance would, could range up to seventy-five percent or a hundred, if the school wants to count on more. The downside to using that is that the day we start the clock, is the day that program begins running. So if there are delays and that sort of thing, uh, that can be problematic.
So what, what do you think? Let me ask you this. Give me a, you don't have to be specific, but a round estimate on what, what kind of funds could be raised?
Well, let's just, let's just look at, let's look at, and this is a really good example. Let's look at that from shoulders. That was a ten million dollar investment. The talent yield on that is in the range of a quarter million dollars per year. So take ten.
Four million. Four million, that's good increase for schools.
Yeah, again, it's, it's the bulk of its own schools. But the point is is that the yield, now remember on the door, you're going to take that money and you're going to move it through the city and perhaps give it to the developer in some fashion. All right? On a performance basis. Unlike a CRA where he just gets to write it off, he's got to pay the tax on the board. Okay? Or DRD, sorry. He's got to pay the tax and then it would come back to him. It would come, it could come back to him in some percentage. Okay? Depending upon the agreement that you have. So you've got a couple of moving parts you need. Where's the school? And it is what you want to fund and then under what terms. So you're going to want a contract. All right? Because you're going to write a check to him or the entity. Come back to your point, four million dollars, probably worth a million dollars a year in tax. You got it all held together. Over ten years?
Ten million dollars.
It's ten million bucks. So, so what you got is basically what we looked at on the CRA, which is can you discount a project at fifteen to twenty percent? Is that within the feasible range? And that doesn't include his historic preservation tax credit.
All right. So if I'm hearing this correctly, historical preservation in the, the five million dollar range through the, uh, DRD, a million a year over ten years, that's ten, we're fifteen. Project, you just said it's anywhere between, what, forty, five and fifty? What about the other remaining thirty-five million?
So back to borrow that. That's his capital staff. And you put your finger on it. He's got, he's got, he's got a lot of properties around him to borrow money out of.
So he's a businessman. And he's going to borrow thirty-five million on a unit that's going to have, how many units? How many housing units?
A hundred and thirty. And, and at two, at two fifty, it's like thirty-two million anyhow. You know what I'm saying? So the loss leader for him is the, the single family loss. Because I, I remember talking to him before about this. And now with the way things are with the economy, it's a little more difficult to try to make the numbers work. Because initially he's sticking in the twos to create a project, you know, it'd be a runoff for five years. And then you potentially condo after that. And then you could recover some of that money. So that's really the loss leader for him.
He was part of that because of historical credit, right?
The historical credit, that's right. You have to rent it for five years before it cuts condo.
Now, let me ask you this. The, the, um, the total value you, you reference is part to renovate that. Does that include all the surrounding stuff? We're going to have to do parking and whatever else?
Yes, it's going to have to have a complete.
But that's included in that?
Sixty-five.
You know, it's in the heat. But we don't know, Mark.
We're wasting our time on this right now.
Yeah, okay. But just, just to, excuse me a second.
I know, I just went over my car.
We have not seen.
There's been five years. We have the market thing. They don't, and we've been doing that for ten years.
We have not seen.
Right. So that's why I don't know why we're like this.
I know. And all, all it is, yes, because you're like, all of your work, all of your tax. All of those are high. I mean, where we were at ten years ago, we were in the exact same spot.
I know.
Questions, how many?
I know.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mark. Go ahead. No, I'm just giving you the report, the hand. Uh, do we want to, you know, do we want to move forward? I'm sure we do. Uh, we can sit here and just let it sit like it's been. And, you know, like I said, it's got a hundred. You think he's going to move on this if he's got other people who's moving on it? So we just, we need help there. We need to get that movement, you know, money candidate.
I mean, he has cash specifics. He hasn't given us any specifics. So when he worked at the Hall, there was specifics. So for him to say, I want to grant you on this, well, he needs to be willing as well and give a specific. You gave us no numbers. You just said, oh, he's interested. He knows it's a good market. We know houses, real estate's difficult. But he's going to be able to give other careers away because things have sold downtown. So he knows that. So he needs to do something as well.
Here's, here's.
And he's been a great community. I agree. He has. But tell us what you want to do. I've met him too.
This, this is the number one. We could have ten master plans and every master plan we set.
It is. It's only the job.
What we do, we could buy five K marks, we could do whatever we want.
So tell me that, that at that meeting, it was the one table everybody followed around. What does he want us to do? What does he need?
That's what I'm saying. So we ended it together with him and talked about it.
Lay out.
I think we have it.
So number one item, yeah, ten years.
Yeah. And I, I'll tell you, Mr. Trump, it was when I looked at the, the community surveys and I pulled all worst than in the past, I looked at those. Hoover was probably under one.
I agree.
Uh, but here's the point, is that when you look at this council over the last thirty-six months, it has done virtually everything it can under Ohio law to create an assistance for that project. It is all ready. It is all placed, whether it's zoning, whether it's the DRD, or whether it's the door for any restaurant that he might be able to attract a restaurant that he can attract.
And when it's lost, we move to other areas of our community to try to grow.
That's actually it.
So he could thank us for those other properties we have lost.
That's correct. I, you know, the time of matter is that I have a little favor. I have a little favor.
Same spirit, yes, that's my respect there.
But the point is, the point is, is that people say, what's happened? The first call is this. Is that a lot, we've done a lot. The two things that we can't do anything about are air quality. We couldn't get tenant standards until recently. So that issue is on the table here. Number two is this, I can't help him with his master staff. He had money. Okay?
Let's move on.
You can't help him. So unless and until somebody shows up with three, five, forty million dollars, unless you don't want to get the lending business, you. Does he want your money?
Don't do that.
I don't think he wants it.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Okay? Remember, Sir Roy?
I'd like to start about the next twenty minutes.
That's why I have to have beans.
Thanks for, uh, speaking, Chuck and Larry. Uh, I wanted to thank all the people that were involved in the luminaries and Florida street. If you guys have ever had a chance to walk that, it is, uh, it's, it's an experience. Very cool. Um, and find support a little bit.
Okay, final call for your business. All right, uh, meeting calendar for the remaining, uh, month of September. We have committee of all on the twentieth. City Council on the twenty-seventh. And let me jump in real quick. Uh, just to remind everyone, we have uh, budgets. We are discussing the budget on October eighteenth. Um, first reading is the twenty, this is October. First reading is the twenty-fifth. Second reading is November eighth. Third reading is November twenty-second, which brings me to um, the meetings get, uh, October eleventh, which is Columbus Day. I would like to cancel that meeting. I don't think we're going to need that. And, and November fifteenth. It's far enough in advance if we need to move that double up committee meeting. So motion at the second to cancel the October eleventh and November fifteenth. Do we approve the calendar as presented?
Approve.
Is there a second? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion care. Exactly. Please the agenda to see if we, motion good journey.
Thank you.
Give me a motion good journey.
Motion good journey.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.